Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug. Johnson is absent. Milton and Festerson is absent.
It's Women's History Month. I know that was mentioned. And I think of my late mother, who was the first woman elected to the MUD Board of Directors, what she meant in my life. And in a city where you have the first woman mayor presiding and the council acting president is a nice, strong female here today. And as a dad of three daughters, I want to recognize all the women out there. The importance of Women's History Month in Omaha. Secondly, it's Irish American Heritage Month. As some of us are in our green up here today. Thank you, Councilmember Milton. We had a great parade on Saturday. The weather was perfect. And Omaha's finest took care of everybody. It was a safe, great, well-attended environment as it always was. And also, the building trades in Omaha are actively recruiting men and women. If you want a good union job, a job in the building trades, you can reach me at danny.bagley@cityofomaha.org. If you have a loved one that's looking for a job, I can get you connected to the right people. And also, the City of Omaha has a summer job internship fair tonight from 4:00 to 7:00 at Mockingbird Hills Community Center at 10242 Mockingbird Drive. So, anyone interested in a summer job or internship with the city can attend that event or you can email me at my office as well, and I'll be glad to direct you. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate and conduct our business, we ask that you please silence or turn off all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a class C liquor license for Brother Sebastian Steakhouse and Winery located at 1350 South 119th Street.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number Six is today. Are there any proponents? Come on down. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Scott Lurie, 15548 Burdette Street, Omaha, Nebraska. And I'm obviously, it's, I'm the person that is purchasing Brother Sebastian, so obviously I'm here in support of myself.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming down. It's fabulous place. So, are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Saying none? Roll call.
Row, Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
Thank you.
Items seven through 10 can be considered together for Deer Creek Replat 26, located at 7361 North 122nd Avenue Circle. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven and eight, ordinance to rezone this property from DR District to R4 District to DR District to R4 District. Items nine and 10, resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat.
Public hearing on Agenda Items seven through 10 is today. Are there any proponents? Come on down.
Hello, Steve Masaitis, 7361 North 122nd Avenue Circle. I'm the homeowner.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're just here to answer any questions?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Larry Jensen, 7377 North 122nd Avenue Circle. I see that this land is going to encompass a little bit of my property there. And I just want to know what is going on. I was not notified of a first or a second reading. And this is the first notification I've gotten in the mail. I'm just trying to find out what's going on with this property.
Okay, well, maybe we can, in just a moment here, maybe we'll give the owner an opportunity to give a response.
Sure.
Okay. Are there any other opponents? Saying none? I'd invite the proponent back up if you would like to just maybe give just a brief statement about what you're doing with the location.
Yeah, originally, we put in a pool in addition to the back of the house back in 2022. And prior to the planning and the design process, in the December of '21, I had an opportunity to purchase 25 feet of the golf course behind my property. And I did that. Just, I was, at the time, I was concerned with possible impervious coverage. But that was never an issue in the end. But I think Larry is maybe a little concerned. In that letter, there was a typo on it. It said that I was taking like 11.7 acres or something. So, I think that's what he was probably, he's probably concerned about.
And you're taking feet?
I'm taking 25 feet, you know, the lot's almost 100 feet wide, so it'd be about 2,400 square feet.
Okay, and that, it's just the parcel that backs up to your...
Yeah, it's just a little parcel straight back behind my property, off 25 feet behind the property.
But you're required to go through this whole process in order to accomplish that?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I bought it like two years ago. But it's, the golf course got sold, so it's been a long process.
Right, so you're just going into the golf course a little bit? You just bought that from the golf course?
Right, 25 feet of it.
Okay, so you're not affecting any other property owners?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, councilmembers, any other questions or is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just gonna ask the Planning Department if they could shed a little light on this. I think Mr. Masaitis did, but if the Planning Department wanted to weigh in?
Sure, yeah. Dave Fenslot, he was accurate. He's proposing to purchase about 25 feet of the golf course lot incorporated into his residential lot, along with that comes the rezoning from the golf course to the residential district.
And it does not impede upon any of Mr. Jensen's property, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Move for approval.
Second. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Items 11 through 14 can be considered together for bungalows at White Hawk Lake, located at 4205 South 204th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R6 District. Item 12, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item 13, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 14, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on Items 11 through 14 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Members of the Council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the developer and the development. With me today is Joe Zidina of Lamparneers, the consulting engineers on this particular project. This is a 210-unit bungalow project at the southeast corner of 204th and F Street. It's come through with, you know, essentially flying colors. We had neighborhood meetings, etc. No one showed up. Comes to you with favorable recommendations from not only the various departments, but also the planning boards. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding this particular project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Saying none. Are there any opponents? Saying none. Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Items 15 through 19 can be considered together for the NOOK, located north and south of Eighth and Pine Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 15, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the NCE to incorporate this property into that district. Item 16, an ordinance to rescind the PK overlay district for this property. Item 17 and 18, resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat. Item 19, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on Items 15 through 19 are today. Are there any proponents?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Members of the Council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the developer. In this case, it's Worthington 10 LLC, but it's really a Bluestone project. With me today is Deborah and Christian. Christianson with Bluestone Development, as well as Todd Muller, the architects, with Alley Pointer. And also Aaron Cloak with Bluestone Development is here as well. Also, Joe Zidina is here with Lamparneers and the consulting engineers on this particular project. I guess I just wanted to point out first and foremost that this project had already been reviewed and approved by this council with the redevelopment plan, I believe, on October 3rd, and the redevelopment agreement on October 31st of last year. Also, the conditional use permit that allows for this particular project, which is just to the planning board only, was approved by the planning board as well. So, really, the zoning and the redevelopment plan and redevelopment agreement for this particular project to allow it to move forward have already been approved by the requisite boards. This conditional use permit being the planning board, redevelopment plan, redevelopment agreement, the city council. So, I just wanted to point that out. So what we're here today approving is the expansion of the NCE overlay district, as well as the rescission of the parking overlay district, and then, of course, the preliminary plat, final plat, and subdivision agreement. So, that's really why we're here. Again, I don't want to get too deep in everything. We've been through all of this in the past. But if you recall, this is an aerial photograph showing the various zoning that surrounds or where this property is and what's the surrounding zoning is. The property is really in this location, this location, and then right here as well. So as you can see, it's all pretty much either NCE or R7. So, the zoning in this particular case, as well as the conditional use permit, have always been consistent with the surrounding zoning areas with respect to the actual site This shows the site plan. Kind of showed you there on the aerial photograph. But you have the units here along Pine Street, and then, of course, the units here along Eighth Street, and then, of course, along Worthington Street here. The developers proposing 250 units on, or within 11 buildings. The architectural design was really designed to fit in with the fabric of the neighborhood. This is the elevations. And again, you've seen these, but just to refresh your recollection of what the development is, this is the rowhouse look along Pine Street. Again, if you recall, it was really integrated into the fabric of the community in this particular location by using landscaping and architectural materials of, you know, high-quality materials. This is another rendering of the elevations of the rowhouse look. And this is the elevations of the apartment buildings. And so, as you can see, there's articulation with the architectural style that fits in well with this particular community. There's a number of amenities with respect to this development, the typical amenities that you see with this type of an apartment complex. There's also, as shown on this site plan, there's pocket parks within the development that provides for grilling areas, sitting areas, fire pits, etc. And I guess the main thing, we've had numerous neighborhood meetings over the course of this particular project, in particular Deborah and Christian meeting in smaller groups, and then we had a large group meeting. Then, of course, we've met with the, at the planning board, and then we've met here at the council with respect to the, and at the planning board with respect to the redevelopment plan, and this council with respect to the redevelopment plan and the redevelopment agreement. So this is, you know, this has been heard numerous times, really by all, and it's received favorable recommendations and approvals all the way through. I think the primary concern of the neighbors was the parking situation. But in this particular case, it meets all the parking requirements of the NCE overlay district. And there's required parking is 250 spaces. There's 264 spaces provided, both off-street parking and adjacent on-street parking, as well as 25 alley spaces here in the back, as shown. So again, with respect to the 10th Street NCE plan, it specifically calls that the whole purpose of this plan was it's intended that on-street parking be fully utilized within the district. That's a quote from that plan. And that parking coordination between compatible uses is strongly encouraged for on- and off-street parking. And so, this project is completely consistent with that plan and meets all the requirements of that plan as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this project and, of course, respond to any opposition that may be here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? We can't answer questions from the floor. If you need something, you can ask the clerk. But we have proponents and opponents. If you would like to come down as one. Hi, just state your name and address.
Okay, my name is Karen Bluebus. I live at 824 Worthington Avenue. And yes, there is a Worthington Street. Our family has lived in the house that I live in for over 100 years. And there has been some question regarding parking. And when the meetings took place in October, I was out of the country, so I couldn't. But I would like to make a comment about the parking. During the time that I have lived in the house, we've had residences up and down the streets, which all had cars. At one time, I think we had four vehicles. And then we had Grace University, and the students would drive from the dorms around the block to go to the education building. So, parking is something that we've dealt with. We've all worked at it together. So I don't think that parking will be really that much of a problem. I think the last couple of years, we've been spoiled because there has been no vehicles. There has been no residences. It's just a great, big, open street. So with that, I would like you guys to pass this zoning so that I can have some neighbors. I have nobody behind me, nobody on the other side of me, and I have a school, which is great. But if you want to go borrow a cup of sugar, there really isn't any place to go do that. So, I have worked with Christian and Deb in the past on their projects in the neighborhood and with the property, and have found them to be concerned and very approachable to any questions or problems that have arose. So, I would like to ask you to pass this today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents? No other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Hello, I'm Connie Monastero, 709 Pine Street. Literally four houses from where the apartments are going to be on Pine. I guess our biggest concern is the parking. And reading, trying to read what was set in the agenda, I think you have to be an engineer to figure out everything that they're talking about. But I guess the biggest question for us is, they're obviously going to have some on-street parking. And that's fine. Is that going to be labeled strictly for them? Is that going to be in front of the apartments? How is that going to work? Because it looks like there is the parking in front of the apartments, but then you also have the schools around. They're both St. Francis Cabrini and Pine Elementary. So with one-way streets for one hour in the morning and in the afternoon for those schools, is that changing? And then also signage for the area for where the parking is, where you can't park, and signs stating that towing will be involved. So I don't think it's part of the neighborhood to have to call on people that are parked behind no parking signs or something to where if they just need the traffic vehicle moved so they can get their cars out of their driveway or something. So that's another issue that I think the neighborhood has with all of that. And just moving forward, a little more transparency as to exactly what is going on. I mean, they can put all this stuff into plans and everything, but we as the neighborhoods, I just got the letter a few days ago about this, so I had no idea. Okay? I don't know.
Okay.
Okay?
And maybe, well, we can, we can call Mr. Jovan back up to speak about that in just a moment, and also, he might be able, be willing to speak with you at length after this hearing. Are there any other proponents? I'm sorry, we're on opponents. I just said proponents.
I know, I'm sorry.
I don't do this job all that often, so just filling in.
That had already been done.
President Festerson. Just state your name and address for the record.
Okay, I'm Robert May. I live on, at 1402 Park Wild Avenue. What I was wondering about is, in, oh, I guess it's the plat that I got, there shows parking around the school on both sides of the street. There's never been parking around that school. Are they going to change the zoning so that the people can park in front of their apartments? One of those lanes in front of the school is for drop-off. Is that going to be 24-hour parking now? And then on the other side, there's never been parking there. So I was wondering if the zoning for parking is going to change around that school so that more people can actually park in front of their apartments rather than deeper into the neighborhood?
Okay.
But that's, so I was just gonna see if anybody knew any things about that. That's why I was gonna ask this gentleman here, but...
Well, we'll ask him to come back up and maybe go through, maybe some more details on the parking for everybody and maybe see if Public Works or somebody could weigh in on parking on public streets.
Because those streets are pretty narrow. I mean, there's wide streets in the neighborhood. There's really narrow streets that people are parking all over the streets, and it's going to be really hard to get through in some of those areas, especially on the hills.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other opponents?
John Hart, 1402 Park Wild Avenue. Just to give an example, I know you're probably tired of hearing about the parking. But last Sunday, when the incident at the Catholic church happened, I heard the first boom, and I walked up to the corner of Eighth and William Street. And I noticed that from 10th Street all the way to Eighth Street, there wasn't one open position in the plate, you know, the buildings hadn't even been built yet. So if there's a problem now, there's going to be a problem. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming down today. Are there any other opponents? Saying none? Oh, sorry. It hadn't popped up yet. Come on up. State your name and address.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I'm opposed to this because hopefully I can keep you out of my neighborhood. I go back quite a few years at these meetings, and one thing I do kind of minimize after all that is that on the second reading, you maybe have a hearing, but after the second reading, the citizens have no input in it usually. And you come back with an amendment like you are today, which we cannot speak on or vote on. That's a way of chasing people out of the older neighborhoods like this area. My area is an older neighborhood. Outside investors buy single-family homes. Your master plan is to increase density. In comes somebody that buys it and rents it out to five or six people. Their cars, five and six cars, have blocked 50th Street and Lafayette Avenue. These, some of them are multifamily. Some of them are Creighton students. But I'm getting tired of seeing this happen across Omaha. And it's maybe time to rethink your density thing. But if you want to chase us out in the Dundee area there, then go ahead and pass this and keep on with the same tactics. This is not the way to run a government. Thank you. You work for, you work for we, the people, not the other way around. Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Saying none. Public hearings closed. Want to give the developer an opportunity to come back up, and then I'll take the lights.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the Council, Larry Jovan, 11440 West Center Road appearing on behalf of the developer. I'm just going to point out a couple things, and I'm going to turn it over to Joe Zidina that's going to talk in particular about the on-street parking for this particular project. But again, just to kind of show you, so the public parking occurs really in this location along Eighth Street, and then in this location or along Pine Street. And then, of course, you have the off-street parking here and here and up here. So, and right here, that is all the off-street parking. Then you have the alley parking in the back here, and there's, I believe, 25 parking stalls in the back. Now, that alley parking is on private property. The on-street parking is public in nature, and that we cannot prohibit or prevent the public from parking those particular locations along Eighth Street and along Pine Street. And before I turn it over to Joe, I just wanted to point out that there's been multiple, multiple public hearings on this particular project. We had the planning board hearings on the conditional use permit, the NCE overlay district, the parking, rescission of the parking overlay district, the preliminary plat, final plat. And then we had another public hearing on the redevelopment plan before the planning board. And then, of course, we had a public hearing on the redevelopment plan before the city council. And we had a public hearing before the city council on the redevelopment agreement. And then today, now we're here before you with the public hearing on the NCE, the parking rescission overlay, and then also the preliminary plat, final plat, and subdivision agreement. So there's been multiple, multiple opportunities for the public to speak on this matter. Plus, we've had numerous small group neighborhood meetings, as well as one large group neighborhood meeting. So there's been multiple times that this has been subject to the public's review. We've been, and I think Bluestone is always this way, open book with respect to their developments, and they couldn't be really a better developer, in my opinion, and, you know, as far as the way they conduct themselves with the neighbors and try to bring themselves into the fabric of the neighborhood. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe just to talk a little bit about the on-street parking, and we'll answer any questions at that point.
Thank you.
Yeah, please. Good afternoon. Joe Zidina with Lamparneers, 14710 West Dodge Road. Just a reminder, we, back in probably 2020, we've been working on this project for a little while now, we did a collaborative traffic study with Omaha Public Schools. We met with the city on several different pre-application meetings. Actually, one of them was with OPS, so that we made sure that we considered their needs with our needs. And the improvements made as part of Pine Elementary included some dedicated parking and drop-off lanes within their property. Additionally, we've been working with Public Works. That's probably what took us some time to get here from the last round of approvals, was to make sure that we dedicated additional right-of-way. These streets that we're referring to around the perimeter of this project are wider than your average residential street. They're wider than 25 feet. Some of them are up to 32 feet. And the right-of-ways are also wider, and so we've got extra capacity on these streets. But we've, we've done, we are required to do a bit of dedication for additional street width, maybe two, I think a foot and a half to two feet. But we have adequate roadway width. We've coordinated with Public Works. We've got a collaborative traffic study that was done with OPS. And we feel pretty confident that, you know, the signage will not change for the school. That's not a part of our project or... That's not a part of our project or even our authority. And we'll work accordingly with the city Public Works and Traffic to sign our project as necessary.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hug.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just want to hear myself talk, but Mr. Jobin, I want to explain to you a relationship I have not only to this district, but to Ms. Monastero. I've known their family for many, many years. And last year, I came, we put an offer to buy a house this catty corner from your house. So it was like real close to living down in that district. If I was living down in this district, I probably would be looking at this entirely different. But this was all pretty much decided and agreed upon and passed before I came on the city council. Is this true? The answer is yes.
Do you want to call somebody up? Do you want Mr. Jobin to come back up? You have to call him up?
Yeah, please, Mr. Jobin, I apologize and thank you, Madam Chairman, for creating me.
No, thank you, Mr. Hug. I believe that is, in fact, the case, yes. I think this project came before this council, prior to you coming on to the council. I can't remember, I couldn't remember the exact date that you became part of the council. But the redevelopment agreement and plan, the plan was October 3rd of 2023 and the agreement was October 31st of 2023.
So, my second meeting. Anyway, so what I would like to ask you to do as a personal favor to me, make sure you reach out to Ms. Monastero, get her contact information, and I'd like you to personally see that her questions get answered, and that's all I want.
I'd be happy to do that. The whole team would be happy to do that, so we will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, Councilman, Councilman Harding, your light was on? No? Councilman Begley?
Thanks, Madam President. Larry did a good job of smizing what we have, what we have been through to come here today before the items on our agenda. And Deb, if you could come up for a second, or Christian?
Deborah Christensen, 7001 Farnham Street.
Deb, good afternoon. Thanks for coming down here today with Christian. I know I see some of the neighbors here today that I've probably corresponded with or talked to during the life of this project, and I know it goes back to when you would reach out to me when I got on the council. This had started, I think, maybe back in the fall of 19, 2019, before I was on the city council. And then COVID hit, and then you started working on this, I think, in the, in the spring of 2023. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, we've owned the property since 2017, I think, and we're getting ready to work on a project. COVID kind of stopped things, then it, we had some other development projects that got put in front of it, but then we really got back to working on it in 2022 and then last year.
And, and the conversations that we had, and I, and I know, I kind of got to know you and Christian, you built a project across the street from my house, if you're familiar with that one on 48th and Pacific.
Yep, the Boss Apartments.
Right. And I know at that time, was that maybe 2018 or 19 when that was built?
Yep.
And that was literally right outside of my front door. And I know when I got on the council, I got a lot of education. One of the things that Director Fanslaw had explained to me when the Boss was built, the process of planning goes through with the developer, that you guys or any developer would have some big grand plans and planning will say, timeout, here's what we have to do. David, if you could confirm that for me? When a developer comes to the city, tell me briefly how the process of the planning department, when they work with the developer on a project?
Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. Well, to answer your question, I think it's, it's, it's diff, it can be different for all projects. But generally, the developer comes in, meets with staff. We provide them comments back after we've had a chance to review their concept plan. And if there are things that we can suggest that would make the project better or bring it into conformance with the master plan or the zoning code, we surely do to do that at that time. And we work with the development community, the applicant, other city departments, planning board, city council to see if those projects can be approved.
Thanks, Mr. Fanslaw. And I, through that process, brings me to you, Deb. When you guys started this one, I had good education from colleagues on the council who have been through developments with the planning department, and then I, I had several meetings with you and your husband. And one of the things I mentioned that I learned early on was communication with constituents with the neighborhood. So can you just briefly touch on how that worked in this process after you and I had met?
Right. We met, well, I guess I'll, I'll talk about when kind of we met with neighbors, is that?
Just the process in general, the outreach and communication you did after you talked to me with, I, I, you talked to Dolmanhood Neighborhood Association, you, you had small meetings and large meetings.
Right. We had some small meetings prior to COVID, when the project was getting ready. Then after COVID, when we got back to working on this project, we had some small meetings. And then we had a large neighborhood meeting last summer. We made sure that, we actually sent out our own postcards to everyone within 500 feet of the property. The city, I believe, typically sends out to 300. The Dolman Neighborhood Association put it in their newsletter. They also send out postcards, because we wanted to make sure that we got everyone there who wanted to be there. In addition, we have had lots of just one-off conversations with individual neighbors over the years as well.
Okay, thanks. And Councilmember Hug kind of touched on the things that I wanted to cover. He's got a lot of good relationships with people in that community. But I, I would second what Councilmember Hug said. If it was Joe or Larry or your team, what I like about you and your husband is you're very good at communication. So when that Boss project was going on, I knew outside the front of my house, if there was issues with parking or anything, there was a guy that I could talk to on site.
Right. And in addition, sorry to interrupt you. In addition, during construction, we always put up a kind of an early website, a temporary website that gives the, that the neighborhood, we send out postcards where they can join the commentary from the website, and we give them updates on construction, and we give them phone numbers, they can call if there's any issues with construction. And we have our people on, often on-site all the time. We have a great contractor we've worked with for almost 20 years, who knows that we like to be good neighbors, how we, how we want things done, the streets are clean, et cetera, et cetera, during construction.
And those are great things when we talk that are important, not only to private citizen Danny Begley that lives where I still do when the Boss is going on, but also the people here today that I heard from during this process. Change is always kind of a tricky thing and a scary thing, but if there's the reassurances, I think, for Connie and others that are here today, from your team, that I already know from my experience, you do that, and I, that's why I'm going to support this and why I've supported it consistently, because the outreach has been there and the things going forward with, when the construction starts, if this gets approved today, which I'm hoping it does, then the communication and the outreach doesn't end on March 11th or whatever today is.
Absolutely.
It's going to continue because of the things you already spelled out that in the prior projects, you've done several in Omaha, that I'm confident that, that your team will be able to communicate, and of course constituents, Connie or others that are here today. If, if, you can always reach out to me, danny.begley@cityofomaha.org, and I can get communication if it's needed. But I got confidence in you guys, and I'm glad to make a motion to support this today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a procedural question, since we are a little short staffed here today. Of these five items, do any of them require more than four votes?
I believe the final plat requires five.
Final plat, okay. Thank you.
All right. No further lights? There's a motion and a second? Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Hug. Melton?
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Item 20, in ordinance to create road maintenance district number 2023-01 to improve Hickory Street from South 90th Street to South 91st Avenue.
The public hearing on Agenda Item Number 20 is today. Are there any proponents? Any proponents on Item 20? I see people keep getting up, but I think they're leaving. Are there any opponents on Agenda Item 20? Seeing none? The public hearings closed? And there's a motion? Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Hug, Melton?
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearing on Agenda Items 21 through 26 are, was held on March 5th. Are there any comments or a motion? Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Hug, Melton?
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Oh, I'm sorry. The public hearings on Agenda Items 27 through 59 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
My name is Diana Vogt. I represent Dr. Phaler and other citizens of the Deer Park subdivision and SID 405. I'm speaking with regard to item number 56, which is the improvement of some parks to be in that subdivision. And I'm actually only addressing part of that. We are only concerned about the inclusion of the pickleball courts before there have been any studies or any work done to determine the actual effect of pickleball courts on residences, which seems to be much different than the effect of tennis courts or any other kind of recreational activities. I have actually brought a copy of my prepared remarks so that I can pass those to the city clerk, so that I do not have to read the sources that I'm citing. So I will provide that after I'm done. There are reasons...
Ms. Vogt, I'm sorry, the clerk just, we need your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. 260 Regency Parkway Drive, Omaha, Nebraska.
Okay, thank you very much. I didn't mean to interrupt. Please go on.
That's fine. We want to ask the council to either withhold the decision on number 56 or pass it without allowing the pickleball courts. I'm sorry I can't address what you need to do on that procedurally, but that is our request. Now, we know that there are currently no regulations on pickleball courts. The institution of pickleball courts across the country, from California to Massachusetts, has resulted in multiple lawsuits, many of which have ended up with the courts being ordered closed, and they're a total waste of money if they're built where they can't be used. There are several reasons why pickleball is different from tennis or other courts. Pickleball produces sounds that are more impulsive with unpredictable spikes. Pickleball play results in erratic, often frantic rhythm of play that contributes to, quote, "its uncanny ability to drive bystanders crazy." The pitch of a pickleball hitting the paddle is the same frequency as that of the beeper on garbage trucks, which are specifically designed to break into your consciousness and get your attention. Centennial Colorado and the city of Denver, city and county of Denver, looked into this. Centennial actually enacted a moratorium on all pickleball courts because the disturbances between pro-pickleball people and those who are being disturbed by it became so severe, they just put a moratorium on it. And they did research, including commissioning a 77-page study, which is available online. And, and they and the city of county, city and county of Denver came to the following conclusions for regulations. Pickleball courts should be located in parks or athletic buildings where there is room for them to play and not disturb neighbors. If any pickleball court is going to be within 350 feet of a residence, there must be a sound study done before the courts can be built. And most importantly, to what I'm discussing here today, pickleball courts should be at least 350 feet away from the nearest residence, and if possible, 500 feet. Now, that 350 feet is approximately 100 feet greater than Dr. Phaler's house is from the planned, from the planned courts. When this plan was presented to the residents, it was presented to the residents showing the courts much, much further away from the residents. It showed that pickleball courts were actually going to, to be built in what is now designated as floodplain. Once they had changed the plan to put them closer to the houses, there was one minor change made, but it still does not put them more than 350 feet from all the residences. Some of the complaints that, from people who have had to live near pickleball courts are, are very graphic. It's been described as like having a pistol range in your backyard, as a torture technique, simply put by someone in Scottsdale, Arizona, living here is hell. Pickleball has replaced leaf blowers as my number one noise nuisance. The constant popping 12 hours a day, seven days a week is borderline torture. And in New York, so many people showed up to use pickleball courts that were put into a playground that they shoved, they, they took the children off, they had to close it to children because it was so packed. Now, certain types of noise, it's been demonstrated, are injurious to the health, including high blood pressure and, and heart disease. And the kind of sound that is generated by pickleball are, is the kind of community sound or neighborhood sound that does cause these health effects. Residents in neighborhoods where there are pickleball courts also complain about the high levels of traffic and the number of people it brings in, because pickleball apparently, I, I'm not familiar with it personally, but apparently the games are much shorter than in tennis and draw big crowds, and so whenever you have pickleball courts, there are going to be people there. Generally, in all the articles I've read, from as soon as there is light in the morning until sometimes as late as 10 or 12 at night. And these are large numbers of people, and it creates quite a disturbance for the neighbors. We are asking for a delay and reexamination of the proposed courts, at least insofar as they include pickleball. So, and we don't believe that this will unduly delay the project because at, at least as far as the agenda when it was published, it indicates that there is not yet any cost estimate attached to the new plan, so it can't be going into effect immediately. And then finally, I'm just going to borrow from the remarks made to the, some of the remarks made to the Centennial Colorado City Council before they enacted their moratorium. The individual said, "The council's choice is this: to allow unregulated pickleball construction and accept the potential for consistent or recurring noise complaints, or the city can take a brief pause to study the issues and determine if regulations to limit noise complaints and the negative impact of pickleball are appropriate. This will both prevent conflict, it will prevent suits over nuisance, and it will prevent the possible abandonment and unused of courts if they are built and prove to be a nuisance." Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for Agenda Items 27 through 59?
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Westergaard, 12711 Scott Street. I am a proponent of Item 56. I come to you this afternoon as the president of the Deer Creek HOA Association, which does not include the condos that are, are in proximity to the racquetball, or the pickleball courts. And I also sit on the SID 405 board. So that's the context for me. We have heard the citizens and the neighbors' complaints, and we have been, what I believe, very reactive to. to them, both the city and the SID and the HOA. We've moved the pickleball courts just as far away as we can. They are not allowed to be in the floodplain. We've actually moved the basketball courts with a permit into the floodplain, so they can be over there. We've changed the orientation of the walking trails so that the street access road wasn't as close to the, to the neighbors. We've moved the parking lot as far to the west as we can away from the condos. So we have done everything we can physically to get those facilities just as far away as we can from those condos. Couple other things I'll just say. This park lot has been there from the very beginning. And I will just confine my comments to pickleball because that's the main concern. I represent the HOA, I represent the SID, and although these neighbors do have some concerns, I would say that the vast, vast majority of the constituents that I represent in the SID and the HOA are highly supportive of the pickleball courts. And we would urge your support, your approval of the plan as amended. We feel that there's been some good compromises, and we feel it is sufficient distance from these neighbors as it is planned right now. So, one other thing I'll mention, these pickleball courts are not going to be lit. So the hours will be restricted to daylight hours. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other, any other proponents or opponents for items 27 through 59? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Dr. James Phaler. I worked for 35 years at Creighton ZR. I live at 12258 Mary Plaza. That's right on the edge of these pickleball courts. As they said, they've moved these things west about 10 yards. That's still about 200 feet short of how far they need to be. Because of the floodplain, they can't get it far away enough to make it acceptable to people that live in these homes. I did have something else I read today that was from this Centennial pickleball. They had a scientific thing at the end that they were talking about, noise impact study. They said that houses with floors above ground level, homes sitting at an elevation higher than the proposed pickleball courts could be difficult to shield with a noise barrier. Our houses, because of the berm being next to a floodplain, are at least 20 feet higher than these pickleball courts. So when that noise reflects off, the noise barriers are not going to block it. Also, they say temperature gradients make things worse. Things next to a golf course or anything that has a lot of moisture from irrigation, we also have a pond on the other side of these, that that will keep the lower air much cooler, and that makes the noise propagate more. So you cannot stop it or do noise propagation, especially in the area we're in. We're in a valley right next to the Papio Creek that runs by. There are other things. We are not opposing the park. The children's things, there's 30 feet, 30 yards from my house is a daycare. The children, their voices are beautiful having them. They have bike trails coming through. Now, they're going to put bridges on the west end of this. If 1,000 people come through that, we welcome it. We do not welcome pickleball. People get on these courts every hour. There's shifts like in a hockey game coming and going, and people play all day long. The noise doesn't stop, and we feel we'll have to move if these are built. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for agenda items 27 through 59?
My name is Miriam Nelson. I live next door to Dr. Phaler at 12256 Mary Plaza. I am also the secretary of the HOA for the condo association. And I have talked to, I think, 19 or 20 of our 23 residents, all who are opposed to the pickleball courts because of, primarily because of the noise, but also because of the increased traffic they will create. People coming and going through our neighborhood all day long, from daybreak to dark. We've talked to residents who live close to other pickleball courts, and they say, and I know this for a fact because I have friends who play, pickleball is extremely popular, and people come from all over the city to any available court. And when they find out that there's going to be some new courts in the west part of Omaha, northwest part of Omaha, I'm sure that they will become very popular. So the concern about the noise and the increased traffic to our neighborhood is shared by all of our residents. And I would just ask the council to delay approval of the pickleball part of this development. The rest of the development for the park is welcomed. An additional playground for the area, and even a basketball court, is fine. But the pickleball is a real concern, and I would just sincerely ask you to take a further look at it and really do some research. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents for agenda items 27 through 59? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, President Melton. Matt Kalsovich, I've got a couple of questions. If there were some sort of, if this were laid over for either part or all of the plan today, what would that do to the timing of the improvements that were planned?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. So I'll point out that this is independently an SID project. We do not have jurisdiction or control over this project in particular. What you have in front of you is actually a modification to something that was already previously approved. You'll see on the attachment, page eight, is what is actually approved on this day. This is a modification of which members of my staff responding to the call of some of the concerns from the neighborhood came together with the SID board to make some of the modifications you see in front of you today for potential acceptance and change to improve the situation per what they're raising as concerns or issues. This came to the Park and Recreation Board as it was required, and we actually had a discussion there with some of the residents about the concerns. And I'll defer to the city attorney for any other insight about this, but I believe this is purely an internal SID issue. We approve things per the regulation of Park and Recreation Board processes, which were followed.
And I think part of the reason too, and finance might want to weigh in, is because we're allowing the, maybe the potential for further debt to go on the SID, which is something that the, being in a SID extraterritor, extrajurisdictional territory that we have control over. Mark Westergaard, can I have you come up? And I had a couple of questions. Thanks. As Mark's coming up, I'll say, and I noted too, as Mr. Kalsovich said, and I think Mark had in his, in his comments, originally the basketball court was, well, the pickleball courts were four, and they were closer to residences. And they've moved the basketball court into the floodway or floodplain, flood fringe?
Flood fringe.
Flood fringe. And then moved the pickleball courts and reduced it by one. Mark, can you tell me, I think I heard you made reference to it, but how far is it from the pickleball courts to the nearest residence?
I might ask the residents that.
Okay. Well, and I'm looking, I think-
I don't know what the exact distance is. It seems it was on the order of 200 feet?
220, maybe?
220.
Yeah, 219 is, I think. Okay, thanks. That's what I needed from you.
I just go back and answer one question that you had. The actual improvements have been let by the Sanitarian Improvement District. So we are prepared to go forward with construction should this be approved in whatever form.
Okay. Actually, before you sit down, let me ask you this, because this is a really interesting conversation, I think, maybe not to others, but I think, because we're seeing this in other areas of the town too, and we're seeing this across the country. And what we've also seen is, I think the National Pickleball Association, I'm not sure what the official name is for that group, but have looked at, because of this issue, have looked at changing rackets, changing the ball, deadening the sound of both the racket and the ball because of this very, this very conversation. And somewhere near about 132nd, in between Dodge and Pacific, we're having a similar situation with this of whether or not pickleball courts are going to go in, or what modifications might be able to be made so that it's not intrusive to the people who live there. Because I think as Mrs. Vogt, I hope I'm pronouncing that right.
Vogt.
Vogt, pointed out that there are studies that will show you that, and I'll get the decibel level numbers wrong, but the point is, is they exceed the decibel level, exceeds the noise ordinance in Omaha, from where the court is to where these residences are in the area I just mentioned. So, part of my question for that long lead-in is, in addition to the reconfiguration and moving the basketball court and the pickleball courts, was there any thought to, and I don't know if you have the exhibit up there from the packet, but was there any thought to moving the area, I think it's to the east, kind of further to the north of the pickleball courts to provide some additional buffering, be it with landscaping or other buffering opportunities?
Say that again?
Well, I think, I'm sorry, it's tough to do with, hold on, I'll see if we can. I guess my question is, without showing it on the plan, is, was there any additional thought to reorienting the courts so that you could provide more buffering between the neighborhood and the courts?
So I believe the answer to that is that going to the north really doesn't increase the distance from the residences, because it's an east-west issue, more or less. Going, I think going north could even, could even make things a little closer.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm looking, the way that it's showing up in our packet, so you're right. So, north, actually, on my page is on the left, so it would have been, if you would have moved the landscape, would there have been any possibility to move the landscaping or buffering to the east of the courts, or even to, to the east or northeast of the courts? But I don't think that that's, that looks like it's probably possible.
We have moved the courts as far as we can to get right up against the floodplain line. Now, if, you know, we have the basketball courts that are allowed in the floodplain. If for some reason the city would condone or support us going forward with the permit that would allow the pickleball courts, we could probably come very, very close to meeting the separations that the residents are desiring.
Okay, so stay with me, Mark. I'll ask planning, sorry to put you on the spot, Mr. Fanslow, but is the, I'm guessing the reason for the ability, or the inability to put those in the flood fringe or floodplain is because of the net, I'm guessing. Is that correct?
That's a great question. Dave Fanslow, City Planning. Probably. Parks and Rec are allowed use in the floodway. There's only five uses that are allowed in the floodway, Parks and Recs being one of them. You know, any kind of grading or fill wouldn't be allowed in the floodway, but yeah, it's probably the netting that would be problematic.
Councilmember Harding?
Yes.
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. The main issue with that is actually the fence. And the fence-
The fence that surrounds courts.
-is part of what surrounds a pickleball court versus a basketball court that can be left open without such a barrier.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Harding, if you'd like, I can offer some additional information about the modification.
Please do.
Spelled out a little differently here. Again, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. So what's actually on page eight is the proposed modification and change versus what's on page nine, if I have that correct?
Yes.
Of the original approved, currently approved, plan for the park through the Park and Recreation Board. But this new plan, obviously, here, because the Park and Recreation Board thought it was the right evolution, I'll represent some of what I felt like was the good work in spirit of collaboration out of my office. So you can actually see the courts were moved an additional approximately 50 feet to the west. There is also vegetation in the parking lot now between the pickleball courts and the access road, and in that case, the residence. So I feel like, again, trying to be a catalyst and a support to the SID, of which, again, we have jurisdiction through the Park and Recreation Board to support the construction of the park within the parameters that we've outlined. At this point, I know they've raised some concerns about pickleball regulation. We do not have any restriction about certain amenities, and pickleball at this point does not have any restriction per any code. So I think there was an evolution here that helps it be a better fit. Unique situation in regards to what was approved, and now what is being presented as a next approval or new approval in regards to the park layout.
Okay, and you said something that I think I wanted to clarify as well too. So, the plan that is shown in our packet on page nine has been approved, correct?
That is correct.
So if we were to do nothing today, or if we were to reject the plan that's in front of us today, the plan in place that was already approved, is represented on page nine, could be built?
That is correct, unless I, with the city attorney, he's nodding his head, that is, that is correct.
Yep. So, thanks, Mark. You can sit down. And to Dr. Phaler and Ms. Nelson and Ms. Vogt, I hear your concerns, but I think at this point, it would be, if we were, the reason I wanted to bring that last point up is that if we, if we were to not vote for this today, they could go ahead with the plan that was already previously approved, which had the courts even closer to the residences. So maybe I would ask that maybe some, even regardless of what happens here today, and I think it'll probably pass, but some further conversation with the architects and engineers to maybe talk about some additional buffering. And I know Dr. Phaler brought up the grade change, which obviously is going to be an issue to maybe alleviate some of those noise concerns. But I would encourage, and Mark's a very responsive person, he'll be willing, I think, to listen and talk and see if there's any additional modifications that might be able to be made to account for that. But this is a further, kind of taking it one step further, this is something that I think we need to address, because we have seen it happen in other communities. We're starting to see it here. And I don't want to make, you know, our neighborhoods kind of, you know, become these kind of ping shooting galleries for, you know, 12, 14 hours a day.
Thank you. Councilman Roe, you're recognized.
I just wanted to note those differences in the measurements. On the, on the plan, it went from 219 feet to 283 feet from the corner of the fence to the closest point that was of concern. And then in between there, there was, there's a dozen, there's 12 spruce trees that are to be built that are seven to eight foot tall. And I'm wondering, Matt, is that, I mean, how effective are they? They're right in, they're, they're there, I'm sure, to help with the sound barrier. Are they effective?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. They are an element of assisting with that. They are not a total eliminator of that sound, but it's part of an effort. And again, I think the footage, the linear feet that you indicate, the parking lot with the vehicles that might be there are all part of that equation.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, I just have some comments to make, and that's what I was coming up. And I just wanted to address Ms. Vogt and the opponents. The current plan has four pickleball courts that are actually closer. So if this council voted no on the new plan, then you're going to have four pickleball courts instead of three, and they're going to be closer to your house. So that- So, that, our choice is to either vote the new plan that makes it better, up or down, or vote no when you get the old plan, which is actually worse. So, this council doesn't get to change the plan that the HOA and SID has. And what I'd also like to note, the SID, you vote for your SID board members.
We didn't. We never got ballots on it.
Okay, well, the SID sits like a city council. They're outside the city limit. I mean, when you pay your taxes, none of it goes to the city of Omaha. Your taxes go to the SID. So, it's a little unusual, because you can go to your SID meetings and voice your opinion, because you're constituents of the SID. But what I'm saying here is, by voting no, the problem will be worse, because there's four pickleball courts instead of three. So, the plan we're voting on today is actually making it better. This city council does not have the ability to change the plan. We can only vote it up or down. And so, that would be my concern. We could, if a council member wanted to lay this over, this is in my district but outside the city limits. I would be supportive of maybe the president, the HOA and some SID maybe meeting again to confirm what you can and maybe what you want to do, because, you know, the board is your representation. The city is just here to approve the park plan, because eventually this park will be a city park. So, that's all that we're doing. But I agree with Councilman Harding in that I don't want to have, I also don't want to have a pickleball court that's disturbing all the neighbors and reducing the value of their property, yet you also have a whole lot of neighbors that want the pickleball courts. Now, I have to say, I appreciate parks painting our tennis courts at the request of neighbors in my neighborhood. I don't play pickleball. I don't think I'm coordinated enough. I'd probably hurt myself. But many of my neighbors wanted to play pickleball, and so they asked if we could just repaint pickleball lines on the tennis courts, and then, of course, my neighborhood paid for the new net and things like that. My neighbors across the street from me, their house is back up to the park where the pickleball is, and it's on our side. If my neighbors had a problem with it, I can tell you, they would actually, they'd come to my door more than once. They wouldn't just call. I haven't, surprisingly, I haven't had any of my neighbors complain, and it was extremely popular last fall. In fact, our neighborhood has the pickleball teams, and in fact, they've requested a porta potty, because there are so many people that are now coming to play pickleball. So, I don't disagree with the number of people that they're requesting, because we want more, but I haven't heard any of the complaints. So, this is kind of sparking me to actually go, walk around and ask my neighbors who live around the pickleball court what their experience is, and because we also have a bunch of trees, there is a bunch of trees in their backyard, kind of between them and the pickleball courts. So, perhaps maybe a one-week layover, I would definitely entertain if somebody wanted to make it, to maybe give people some time to talk, or we can just pass this, and, I mean, the two of you can talk, because if we vote no, it's going to be a lot worse. It's going to, so, and you know what, Doc? You know what, Doc? I'd like you to come back up. I'm going to call you back up. Because, and you just have to state your name and address for the record.
James Fowler, 12258 Mary Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska. This was passed last year without our knowledge. We found out about it this year, because someone gave me their website, and I saw they talked about it, the thing, so we brought this up. They knew we weren't going to like it, yet they brought it through. His company's an engineer for the SID, and there's people that are designing this and doing all the work. So, tell me, there's not a conflict of interest there?
Okay, well, and that, we're not here for that. You can bring that up with your SID.
But I would rather the city council would vote it down and say you don't agree with it, and then they can do what they want to us. I don't care.
Okay, well, I'm more concerned, that may be your opinion, but I'm more concerned, actually, with some of the other neighbors who might feel differently. So, I would, at least, if we're going to have a plan moving forward, I'll be honest, I would rather have a better plan, but...
I would rather not approve it, something we think should not be approved.
Okay, the old plan was already approved. Thank you. Are there any motions or to, motions to approve or layover? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light. Councilman Hug?
Catch up to speed, and Mr. Fanslow, if they needed a variance to move the pickleball courts closer to where the baseball court is, to get that distance, they would go on the floodplain, so they would need a variance. Is that correct?
Dave Fanslow, City Planning. I am not familiar with this plan, because it wasn't on my radar, because it's, I'm not charged with parks, but, so...
What would they need to build the courts on the floodplain?
So, I think Mr. Kalsovich made a good point. The, because Mr. Councilman Harding asked me about the net. Yeah, if there's a fence around it, they would need a variance that would not be supported by the department. We typically don't support waivers in the floodway, but they would need the waiver.
And hypothetically, if they were to do that, knowing it probably would be approved, that process would take, what, three months, six months?
Well, the process to go to ZBAs, about a month. I can't say for sure if it would be approved or not, but the department would not recommend approval of it.
Okay, so that's theoretically, physically not an option. So, if we approve this, we're approving four courts?
No, three. It was four. They've reduced it to three and moved it further away.
Okay, so if we don't approve this, then it stays the four courts that are closer?
Correct.
And if we approve it, it's the three courts that are farther away? And if we lay it over to a date specific, what would change? Potentially, what would change?
I don't know. That would be up to the SID and their constituents.
Well, I'll make a motion to lay it over for two weeks, date specific.
Okay, and procedurally, because this is a group agenda item, we need a motion to remove this item from the agenda? Okay, you're moving to remove this from the agenda item?
Okay, thank you for correcting me. I'll make a motion to remove this from the agenda.
No, we can just remove it from the agenda. We can just vote on the other items and then take this one out.
Okay. So, my recommendation would be that if somebody on the council would like to move agenda items 27 through 55 and 57 through 59, we can take agenda item 56 up after that.
I will make that a motion.
So, that's a motion on agenda items 27 through 55 and 57 through 59?
Correct.
Thank you. Roll call.
Rowe?
Yes.
Begley?
Aye.
Harding?
Yes.
Hug?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero.
Now, we are on item number 56. The public hearing has already been closed on agenda item 56. But that's the only agenda item that we're on right now. Two weeks would be, oh, we have, we don't have council.
Will that screw up the construction schedule that much?
Or maybe just one week and let them, let them talk. I mean, I...
One week it is.
Do you like to, is that to March 19th?
Layover date specific, March 19th, Tuesday.
Okay, I'll second. Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. I always forget to look back down. Councilmember Begley.
Thanks, Madam President. Mr. Kalsovich, a quick question for you.
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director.
I know last summer, we had in Hanscom Park, a, there was a good gathering there for that pickleball court. How many of these are in the city, if you have an idea right now, in the city of Omaha?
So, we have three, four facilities that have multiple courts, Prairie Lane Park, Meadow Lane Park, Roanoke Park, and Miller Park. And then we have approximately 20, a little over 20, additional tennis courts with the striped pickleball lines, the additional striped pickleball lines, as Councilmember Melton mentioned. So, that's our current inventory. I should, I guess, say, and I know we're talking about indoor, but we do have, or outdoor, we do have indoor courts at the majority of our community centers as well.
Okay, thanks. And I know the one in Hanscom Park, that there was a fun kickoff for that last summer. If you don't know the answer, that's all right, but how far is that pickleball court from the houses on the east side of Park Ave, if you were to guess? Really putting you on the spot here.
Yeah, I mean, it's a ballpark, less than this, probably. It's really just right down below the width of the road.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, and I don't recall if there's any barriers from that park to Park Ave and the houses on the east side of Park Ave. Do you? I'm really putting you on your mind, I'm sorry.
As far, well, you know, the design of that facility includes the fence around the tennis court, which is also a pickleball court, a footsaw court, so we have the dual purpose there. So, there's some meshing of activities that maybe mask some of that sound. I don't know that it would be a direct parallel. Plus, we have the road immediately adjacent to the court, so I'm not sure that, from a sound perspective, we're solely talking about pickleball as a sound influence to the neighbors.
No, thanks for that. And I, in thinking of that, I actually had a coffee yesterday morning with somebody from Hanscom Park, and that never came up, so I've never, the point I was making on that one, I haven't heard any complaints about that pickleball court. I've heard good things about it, but that's a little, as I process that, listen to the constituents here today, that's one thing I thought of immediately in my district where that one was, and I've had no complaints on it, but that's neither here nor there. Thanks for your help on trying to answer the best you could on those questions I had. Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
I, I'm not going to support the layover, and in part because I'm not sure what it really gets. I know the, as I said, I think the arguments that have been laid out against the pickleball courts are very well-founded and something that I think the city needs to take a look at in further detail for future projects. But again, we have, there's, I mean, we could lay it over for a week, and the SID could pull the, they could ask for removal of it and go back to the plan that's already previously approved, which is four courts. But I think the SID has been responsive to, at least in part, to the neighbors' concerns about what they're doing and moving the courts and providing the additional buffering with some of the trees and moving the basketball court. So, again, I think that, as Councilmember Melton also pointed out, is that, you know, this is a better plan than what was previously approved, but if we lay it over for a week, I don't see what advantage that's going to gain anyone. And like I said, I mean, not that the SID is going to be the big bad guy and just pull the agenda item and go back to the original plan, but I think we'd be here voting on the same plan next week. So, I will not be supportive of the layover, but to, again, to the opponents, it is something that I'm going to take up further with some of the, looking at noise ordinances and these future facilities and where they're located.
Councilmember Harding, if I may add a comment, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. So, this is certainly a unique situation, as the SID has its own funding, and we have the parameters in place right now about how prescriptive we can be. Again, the overlay of what was presented in terms of a parks plan works within the scope of what exists now. But I can tell you, from a Parks and Rec specific development perspective, we do have a metrics and some metrics that we overlay with the development of certain facilities, and pickleball is one of them. And so, if it's something that needs to be explored further in terms of how that might influence other development in the city, we certainly are happy to contribute to that conversation. We're evaluating some sites now where some of the concerns are being taken into account from a park development or amenity in a park development standpoint. But again, this being outside of our jurisdiction in terms of, you know, other than the Parks and Recreation Board approving the legitimacy of features in the park is really where our threshold stopped. But I wanted to give the council confidence about our city development using some of those numbers and statistics and data in our planning.
Thank you. With that, do you want to withdraw your motion to layover, or?
Proceed with the vote.
Okay, let's proceed with the vote.
Okay.
Okay, roll call. Rowe?
Begley? Harding? Hug?
No.
Melton?
No.
Motion failed, zero to five.
Zero motion? Roll call.
Rowe? Begley? Harding? Hug?
I'm sorry, yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Motion passed, five to zero. One public hearing can be held for items 60 and 61 for the Moxie Hotel. Item 60, an ordinance to approve the Second Amendment to the Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement. Item 61, an ordinance to approve the designation of enhanced employment area.
The hearing on agenda items 60 and 61 are today. Are there any proponents, please?
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here for item 60 and 61. And Patrick Bartman with Baird Homes is also here representing the project owner.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Saying none. Are there any opponents? Saying none. Public hearings closed.
Item 62, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 23 of the Omaha Municipal Code and to add Section 23-538 to reflect changes negotiated with the Omaha Police Managers Association for the years 2022 through 2025. Personnel Board recommends approval.
The public hearing on agenda item 62 is today. Are there any proponents?
Yes. My name's Mark McQueen. I work with the law firm at Baird Homes. Served as the city's lead negotiator on this, for this particular agreement. This is going to sound very familiar to you. We talked about this last week. It's a four-year agreement from 2022 through 2025. In the area of wages, a 0% increase in 2022, 6% increase in 2023, 8% increase in 2024, and a 3.5% increase in 2025. Note that in the '24 and '25 timeframes, the proposed increase matches what the rank and file will receive pursuant to the city's agreement with the rank and file over the last year. So, the idea there is, obviously, stay consistent between the police management and the rank and file in terms of wage increases. Next item that we agreed to is under the umbrella of holidays. Currently, police management has Arbor Day included in their recognized holidays. They're unique in that regard, so we're proposing to remove Arbor Day from their recognized holidays and add Juneteenth, which is also consistent with the other bargaining units at the city. We also negotiated a temporary two-year vacation sellback provision. Currently, police management can sell back up to 40 hours of vacation annually. For 2024 and 2025, we're proposing to increase that by another 40 hours, so they would have 80 hours to sell back in their discretion if they wanted to during the calendar year 2024 and 25. That's a holdover from past years and from difficulty police management has sometimes scheduling their time off, because there's so few of them. They don't always get an opportunity to comfortably schedule their vacation time off, so we're trying to alleviate that concern. We also negotiated a pay progression to the top step provision. Specifically, any member of police management who's been with the force in Omaha Police Department for 24 years and who's been a member of police management for at least three years would advance to the top step of their pay progression table. That's similar, but a little bit more conservative than the rank and file. The rank and file, police command, sergeants, lieutenants, captains can advance to the top step of their pay progression table after 20 years. So, we made it a little bit longer wait, and we ensured that they would be members of the police management staff for at least three years before they're eligible for that advancing to the top step. In addition, we negotiated a provision that allowed members of the drop program to be eligible to apply for a vacancy in the chief's position. The recognition there being, maybe there's some talent in the current drop program that the city might want to take advantage of. We didn't want to disqualify those candidates. Doesn't mean they're going to get the job, and it does not extend their drop date, but at least creates some eligibility for them if... And it does not extend their drop date, but at least create some eligibility for them if they're the best candidate for the position. The next item has to do with Coda. This is career overtime average. Those of you who have been part of historic negotiations know that the city, over a decade ago, inserted Coda as a means by which to avoid spiking on police pensions. So instead of being able to increase your overtime in the few years prior to retirement, career overtime average is smooth that out. That's been the case for the last decade. What we're doing with this provision is we're, for future members of police management, not allowing them to include Coda as part of their pension calculation unless it overlapped to some degree in their, unless they retire within three years of their promotion to police management. And in that event, they would get a pro-rata Coda calculation. That would apply only to future members of police management, not the current staff. And then last but not least, you all know we have a high deductible health plan at the city. Every bargaining unit, every city employee is covered by that plan, except for the firefighters who have their own trust, health trust. As part of that high deductible health plan, the city makes health savings account contributions to the employees' accounts in order to offset the high deductible cost. What we're doing here is increasing the health savings account contribution for police management so as to make it exactly consistent with every other city employee who's participating in the high deductible health plan. That's it for the highlights of this particular tentative agreement. Respectfully requesting your support for this agreement and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Saying none. Are there any opponents to agenda item sixty-two? Saying none. Public hearings closed.
Item sixty-three, an ordinance to accept unauthorized dispersment from the Joint Law Enforcement Operations Task Force in the amount of eighty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars to be utilized by the Omaha Police Department to support overtime operations.
The public hearing on agenda item sixty-three is today. Are there any proponents? Saying none. Are there any opponents? Saying none. Public hearings closed.
One public hearing can be held for items sixty-four through sixty-six. Ordinances to approve agreements and to authorize funding from the fiscal year 2023 improving criminal justice responses to sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking grant program.
The public hearing on agenda items sixty-four through sixty-six are today. Are there any proponents? Saying none. Are there any opponents? Saying none. Public hearings closed.
One public hearing can be held for items sixty-seven and sixty-eight. Ordinances to accept unauthorized dispersment from the state of Nebraska Department of Economic Development multipurpose community facilities grant program in the amounts of thirty-five million and ten million dollars for Levi Carter Park.
The public hearing on agenda items sixty-eight, sixty-seven through sixty-eight are today. Are there any proponents? Steve, welcome.
Good afternoon, Councilmember Melton, members of the city council, Thomas Warren, Mayor's Office. Here as proponent for both items sixty-seven and sixty-eight. These are two grants provided by the Nebraska Department of Economic Development with the support of Omaha State Senators Justin Wayne and Terrell McKinney. The first grant, thirty-five million, is through the Coronavirus Capital Projects Fund. The second grant for ten million dollars is through the North Omaha Recovery Grants Program. These funds will allow us to construct a ninety thousand square foot multipurpose sports and recreation facility and adjacent four outdoor soccer fields, synthetic turf. The multipurpose facility, the construction of the facility actually will include both eight to ten basketball courts slash volleyball courts or weight room. They'll also include classroom space, computer lab for workforce development, health and examination screening rooms. It will also be available for tournaments. The facility will be owned and operated by the City of Omaha, our Parks and Recreation Department in partnership with Omaha Destination Marketing. That's our Convention and Visitors Bureau as the nonprofit partner. Obviously, Levi Carter Park is a public park, so we have control of the site, which makes it shovel-ready and accessible. And so upon receipt of these grants, we can go ahead and proceed with actual construction of the project. And so we are requesting your favorable consideration to accept these grants. And of course, we'll be available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director, wanted to offer some visuals. And many of you received a packet in either our briefing or here prior to the meeting just with the high-level information that went in to complement the grant request. So as Chief Warren mentioned, the indoor space with trying to achieve the amount of ten basketball courts and then the four field spaces, so very much in the spirit and trying to be an amenity similar to tranquility and the concept that we've discussed there with council members. So trying to maintain that same quality and consistency amongst sports complexes or sports facilities. This is another visual. Let me bring this up a little bit if I can. Just with, again, a broad diagram of what could be as far as the ground floor with the courts. The ground floor also housing some of the unique amenities, a wrestling room, fitness space. And then the upper floor having a game lab or technology that would be accessible in this space, education space, the administrative offices, things of that nature. And then also the, to complement the numbers and what Chief Warren mentioned in regards to the funding, this was the scope that we put together internally to complement the grant application. And again, those are in the packet that was provided to council. To reiterate, this would be a facility in the realm of tranquility, serving the community need. Monday through Friday, we would have the economic elements of the tournaments that we would be trying to come in to be part of the financial support of the facility. That being said, we will work with a lot of internal existing and local partners, specifically in this area, to just continue to meet the need and expectations of people there. And part of why there was such a high motivation to pursue this project is that need exists today. Happy to answer any of the questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Okay, just one moment. Are there any other proponents for agenda items sixty-seven through sixty-eight? Saying none. Now we'll ask for opponents.
Is there any way I could use that plan that you had?
Sure.
Thank you. We've been unable to locate something like this.
My name is Joseph Fox Jr. I live at four sixty-one Hartman Ave in Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one one zero. I'm the president of the East Omaha Neighborhood Association, along with my vice president, Brandy Wade. We've been struggling to find a concept plan or a master plan of this facility. And as we hear all today, this is the only drawing I've seen of it. But we, as a neighborhood, haven't been contacted at all or approached about this facility or this project. Being that it will be with youth sports, our area is full of many young youth athletes. And as we both know through the PACE program and whatnot, athletics is the key to keeping kids safe and focused and moving forward. We spoke with the Parks and City Rec and they said they wouldn't have anything to do with this. This is recreation manager Chris.
That is correct. The recreation division will not. This will be run through administration who will handle sports complexes, tranquility, and the record.
Okay, thank you. No, no, we're all just trying to get some clarity on this. We're not sure who will occupy this building. I listened to your comments. This is just what I wrote down previously. Not sure who will occupy this building, who would pay the light bills. Ninety thousand square feet could fit at least, it could fit about twenty basketball courts, you know, seeing here, they're about forty-seven hundred square feet apiece. Now learning that there's going to be a wrestling room built here when the wrestling team and club that operates in this area wasn't approached on this. So I don't know what wrestling area, why we wouldn't be approached on that and fitness. We currently have a community center in our area on Sixteenth and Abbott Drive, just about, and it's closed due to funding. And we can't get a call back from Paula Garcia, the director, coordinator, however it's labeled, about any information on that. And then now, we're going to use thirty-five million plus another ten million of our tax dollars to build a sports facility in our backyard in the park that we live adjacent to, a reason why people buy properties in this area. And that's going to be shovel-ready and ready to turn. I'll tell you, it ain't, there's a lot of grass growing there. They've been slowly maintaining that park less and less. This parking lot here is shown.
This parking lot?
This parking lot here is only used, across the street is used. It's got a splash pad, people fish off of there in the Carter Lake. This parking lot here is used for nothing but gathering of people, charcoal grillouts, loud music, alcohol use. And then they use these residential neighborhoods where the streets aren't shown to exit and do car racing and more loud music. We've approached the, and it's just not police like it should be. It's right across the street from Carter Lake. And so it's there. And then this park is heavily, can't think of the word, it's forgot about. It's not mowed. Their city parks has a nice building over here. And they say, well, we're just not supposed to mow it. There's not use and stuff like that. And it looks like there's great plans, but we have failed to get a plan like this. And seeing that today with a wrestling room and not being approached as the sole wrestling club in this area and fitness area when our community center, we can't even use that for our wrestling team. I'm just curious as to what wrestling team will be in there? Will that be a new wrestling team? Okay. Well, that would be amazing because we've had a sole funder of our wrestling club for twenty-two years now privately. Twenty-six years.
Maybe I'm going to, I'm going to ask that if maybe after the meeting, maybe Mr. Kalsovich would be willing to maybe meet with you and you could talk about this because we can't have the back and forth for the record.
Gotcha, sorry.
If you want to maybe get more information from Director Kalsovich after the meeting, I think he's more than willing to chat with you.
Okay, well, okay, I'll just say why I was an opponent to this is that going forward with this money and this grant without lack of community engagement is confusing as why this is one of the steps here on this giant project that's going on. The multipurpose community center is the third leg, kind of sounds like the first leg now. The I-Hub in the airport business park, which is slated to take a hundred and sixty acres of our land in our neighborhood right now. This seems like something that would start that process when we're trying to stop the whole process as well. I'd love a copy of this master plan if possible. And yeah, it just wanted to state our opinion that we're confused as to why we haven't been reached out to and we, there's been zero community engagement just to be able to write a thirty-five million dollar grant and receive it. I don't know who would build it and who would occupy it. You say in the city parks would occupy it. So the money involved in the tournaments would pay the light bill and stuff. That's the questions I had. Just kind of, I guess the Parks Department guy didn't shoot me in the right direction. He kind of just said, we wouldn't have nothing to do with it. So then it confused us even more. Sorry, I don't know how these things work, but this is, this seemed like the first step to getting more clarity on this project.
All right, thank you. Well, and hopefully you'll get some more clarity when you have some more conversation. Thank you for coming down. Are there any other opponents?
My name is Robin Lincoln. I live at twenty-eight fifty-five Young Street. I was, grew up in that neighborhood. I have five brothers that still live down there. We don't know nothing unless we see it on television. And we're sitting there and they're going to say, well, we're going to remove all the houses out of this neighborhood. We're sitting there watching us tell us that we're losing our homes. So we went to a meeting at Metro Tech. Well, we're going to make four hundred thousand dollars a year off this project. While you're telling us you're taking our property from us that we worked our whole lives to give?
Okay, and ma'am, this is for the, this is for the sports complex.
It really is. But even your park's right up to our back door. We watch that on TV. To this day, not one person has approached anybody. Everything we know, we have to dig it up ourselves or we watch it on television. And that's not right. We don't vote on anything anymore. You have to watch TV to find out what you're doing. They need, they say they get out there with the public and talk to everybody. No, there's nothing in our mailbox. There's nothing posted nowhere. So nobody knows nothing except what they see on TV. By the time you figure out what's going on, it's too late. They already had these private meetings and already ruled on everything. We just finding out now. And we still don't know what's going on for sure. But enough to know we're losing everything we got down there.
Okay, and maybe Director Kalsovich, would you be willing to at least clarify the location of where this is? Because I don't think this is where any homes are. And then if you wouldn't mind a meeting with a couple of people to just explain the city of Omaha's part in this multi-use facility and where it's going and the impact that it may or may not have on the neighbors.
Absolutely. Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. So yes, this grant, these grants are specific to the sports complex development. And I'll let Chief Warren comment if I'm outside of the boundary here of what I believe we're trying to identify. And I'll tell the neighborhood group here, the uniqueness of this was there was a condensed timeframe and really trying to take advantage of an opportunity in terms of this unique funding and funding that wouldn't be available otherwise to do some kind of development. And it's a little bit, there's not a lot of need to invest until something like this becomes real. And now that it potentially will be, we'll be activating the full process that the neighborhood is indicating they want to be a part of. And I can guarantee that that will be exactly what happens and a hundred percent what we do. And we've already launched that process with our tranquility project, which came about in a much different manner. And some know already that we've had some work developing and there'll be more information coming to the council in regards to that project. So these concepts are going to overlay with what we believe, we know, and we'll get some confirmation of that as we engage with the community and some other stakeholder groups, the need that there is in this area. And some of the specific things that we mentioned here were things that had been collected over a period of time that are contributing to this concept that now will be refined through our public outreach process, through our very traditional process with a consulting partner, with the design elements that we'll go through to establish the ideal facility that will serve the maximum amount of people and be the most sustainable product. Yes, the Parks and Rec Department has, will have jurisdiction here, will have management here, and we've created a new division. And again, my apologies to the neighbors who were left somewhat confused and I will certainly take responsibility for that communication not coming out directly appropriately or accurately from my department. And I'll address that when I return to make sure that everybody has clarity moving forward. That we have a sports complex group under our administration now, different than our recreation department, that oversees our community centers. And I will be happy to talk about the Sherman Community Center as well. That has been a unique and challenging situation. But we're always exploring opportunities to re-engage and reactivate. I know that situation in particular for the neighborhood group. We had some anchor tenants there that left and modified our ability to manage that and maintain that facility in the way that we wanted. But if there's new interest to reactivate something there, we'd be open to that and we want that. So yeah, any other questions in regards to this? Happy to answer.
Thank you. And I think, are there other opponents? You can only speak once, so we can, somebody, Mike, can call you back up. Okay, we can't, we can't yell out from the floor, okay? So maybe you'll have an opportunity. And I'm going to call for other opponents and then maybe Director Kalsovich can answer the, any other questions about taking any houses out due to the, due to this. Are there any other opponents? Okay, seeing no other opponents, now I'll close the public hearing and I'll call on Councilman Bagley. You're recognized.
Thanks, Madam President. Matt, I, I took a cruise at lunch today down downtown. I went by Schwab, CHI. I went by Gallup all the way. And you look at the things that are going on. Maybe a new soccer stadium on that route that I took. I think we're investing, is it a billion dollars in the airport? And then I turned into Carter Lake where, one summer for the city of the three that I worked as a high school kid, during the summer I worked with my brother Mark. Caretaker was Larry Hyer at Carter Lake. And I kind of drove the land down there. And I remember what it was like in the mid-eighties. Heck, I remember going down there as a kid. My parents and some families went down and we, I think there was a fruit market down on, I want to say like Sixth or Seventh Street, you're not. So you know, I was real little. So I remember as a kid that and in high school working down there. And now looking at that today with this tremendous investment, I know Councilmember Melton has tranquility she's excited about. I'm excited about it. That's great for the city. I know she's patting her back and feathers in her hair for her district. We're all happy for that. This is a great project for the east side of Seventy Second Street, particularly the old stomping grounds where I worked that summer, dumping barrels and picking up garbage and cleaning the picnic areas. and cleaning the picnic areas. And I think is it Mr. Fox?
Yes, sir.
You got a good vested interest in your community, and I appreciate you guys coming down. Uh, this is only a public hearing today, but I just wanted to share my sentiments that in fact, Alex McLuhan at Channel Seven was down there with his camera. He's probably gonna be doing a story on it tonight. Um, just looking at the lay of the land, you're right. It, it looks like the upkeep in that part where they're proposing this hasn't been done, but I had a meeting on this this morning. I was showed this, and Chief Warren talked about it. We had a great conversation on the excitement of, if this project goes, I think the money has to be sent by, spent by twenty-twenty-six, correct?
Correct.
So, there's no obstruction to the challenges of a project. It's ready to roll. They can hit the ground running. So, if this thing takes off, from what I've seen, and I appreciate, again, you guys coming down, um, Director Kalsovich can address if there's any homes that are gonna be removed from this. My understanding is no, is that correct, Matt?
Uh, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. Yes, this thirty, this forty-five million in grant funding will not touch anything other than the park.
Okay.
The development in the park is that all this is focused on. I know that, um, in a press conference that I had the privilege to be present for, uh, with the governor, there was a highlighting of all of the state funding, um, and this is an element of it. I, I think there might be some confusion about where else there could be, uh, money being spent to influence some of what the neighbors are expressing concerns about, but I can verify that the forty-five million dollar investment will only be on the park property and not impact any residential. What I will add in regards to the current state of the park is, this council and, and those maybe more specific to our Parks and Rec Subcommittee have heard me discuss about the way we're trying to catch up in terms of our care approach, and some of the things that've got ahead of us in terms of the size of our inventory and the amount of resources we have. The mayor's been incredibly supportive in terms of adding to that, but we still have some catch-up to do. This is a rare opportunity in the sense that we don't have many footprints like this left in our inventory to add a facility, as Chief Warren mentioned, in a shovel-ready location, uh, a park that is, uh, primed to be developed. Uh, part of the focus for us was actually what some of the neighbors were indicating were the problems in this park. And we want to bring activity, and that's been a, a solution in other places where we've been having challenges to bring in positive, focused activity to undo some of the negative. And we would do some other work to complement not just this footprint. There's some other sports facilities adjacent to the park, or this project in particular that we'd be looking to work with potentially philanthropic groups, or use some of our traditional, uh, parks capital money to invest in those improvements as well. So it is something that we think will, uh, bring up the quality and caliber of the entire park experience here. And, and obviously this will be a main focal point, trying to meet the need, as I mentioned, in terms of what this will accomplish.
Thanks for that. And, I, I would assume that you're fine talking to Mr. Fox who...
I am. I'll be providing them my business card when we're done.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Matt's a great communicator.
Again, upon successful completion or approval by the councils.
Yeah, the director, the Parks Director's right here, so at least fill in any blanks that you had, Mr. Fox, on, on, prior to you coming down today. But again, looking at, and I respectfully meant that about tranquility. I, I know Councilmember Melton's super excited. We all are. And this, for, for the, that part of northeast Omaha, it's a tremendous opportunity with these, these dollars, um, that people in the neighborhood are gonna be able to use this facility, I'm assuming.
Yes.
And, we can draw in people from out of town. Uh, the airport's right there. There's volleyball, soccer, and, as I was looking through the packet, it's, it's actually synthetic turf soccer field, so...
Correct.
That's, as a kid, I, Cathedral Field was full of rocks and glass, and I'm sure Tech Heights Field for Tommy Warren was, this is great for kids. I mean, what a, what a facility and state-of-the-art, so I appreciate you answering those questions today, and I'll, I'll look forward to any other conversation in our public hearing today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, Director Kalsovich, just one more. Um, 'cause I wanted to kinda be clear on this. You really haven't started anything, and the reason that, like, I don't want anyone to take this, this picture away, that this is just kind of your preliminary, because you have, you haven't spent a whole lot of money on what you're gonna do yet, because you haven't had the money? So really...
Correct.
What we're gonna be voting on next week is, we have to accept the money so that then you actually have the cash that you can start, you can start actually making plans and determine what you want there. This is just kind of, well, these are the basics that we want included, but you wouldn't have reached out and talked to anybody yet, because you didn't have any money to do anything. Is that right?
That's right. Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director, uh, you, you hit the nail on the head, and we didn't want the cart to get before the horse here as far as doing a lot of legwork and building a lot of hope that something could be accomplished until we knew it was a real possibility. And so again, this is the catalyst to really activate our full process and, and engage with the community, and really go beyond what we have here as just the outline of what's the potential for, again, the service we know, i- i- that where there's a gap in service, and address the things we need to as far as youth and the provision of that. A very high initiative for us and me personally. So, yeah, this is really the start of the process. By no means are we, uh, ahead of our normal, uh, situation with engaging the community.
Right. Even, even with the layout, I don't want anyone to take this and say, "This is exactly how it's gonna be laid out." You just kind of, you want basketball courts, you want a wrestling room, you want a workout facility, you want some classrooms, meeting rooms.
Exactly, and, and this could be...
And you want synthetic fields, and so this may change after you get an architect, somebody that specializes in park development...
Absolutely.
And recreation centers. So all of this may change, and especially you meet with the community, and then you get the other architects and specialists involved. And, so again...
Correct.
Sometimes people ask for things and then go, "This is what you promised me." But you, you're just kinda saying, "Here's a two-page, this is what we wanna do, but until I have the money, I can't hire anyone to give us some..."
You're absolutely right.
Real detailed drawings.
Yes. Yeah, uh, that's a hundred percent correct. And, again, these are concepts that we felt like from, uh, a long period of data collection, and some of the somewhat informal engagement with the community in this area, uh, addressed a lot of the need. We may talk to other stakeholder groups who present new information, but I can tell you, even this concept was set up in a way that it would be as versatile as possible. And we would inco- uh, be able to incorporate and accommodate as many different groups who were interested in using things. And any of these spaces could have three or four different regular tenants, if that's what the need ends up being. And we're happy to try and accommodate everyone.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I see no further lights. Next item.
One public hearing can be held for items sixty-nine and seventy for Avenue One. Item sixty-nine, in ordinance to amend section two of ordinance number four-one-eight-nine-zero for the designation of an enhanced employment area and the levy of a general business occupation tax. Item seventy, in ordinance to approve the second amendment to the development agreement for occupation tax in an enhanced employment area, authorizing the use of up to one-hundred-and-fifty million dollars.
The public hearing on agenda items sixty-nine and seventy are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Councilmembers. Jim Bujer, one-zero-two-five-zero, Regency Circle. Um, I'm just gonna introduce, start out by introducing the team of, uh, folks that I have with me today, um, from the Avenue One Development Team. Kurt Hofer, Jeff Hofer, DJ Hinman, and Dakota Hilsner, uh, all here. We have Greg Whitney from Pogue Development, who's gonna talk a little bit about what he's been doing for Avenue One. And then McKinley Wilson from, um, my office is also here. I think we have a presentation. You can help an old guy out. With that, I'm gonna let Kurt kick off our presentation. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Kurt Hofer, uh, one-sixty-eight-twenty Francis Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-three-zero. Uh, good afternoon, Madam President, Councilmembers, staff. Appreciate, uh, allowing us to give an update for Avenue One project as it relates with the approved state of Nebraska Good Life District, and how that, uh, impacts Omaha. First of all, I'd like to also thank the mayor, uh, Mayor Stotter, and, uh, her team, uh, specifically Marco and Jen Taylor. I see she's not here today, uh, because she's probably working on documents related to this, um, which we appreciate her, her great effort, um, over the last sixty days. Uh, we are here today to present an exciting opportunity from the state of Nebraska that's been approved by the Department of Economic Development, uh, which awarded to Avenue One Development the first Good Life District project, which Jim Bujer will be sharing some more details about here in just a little bit. Uh, as I look around this room, there's some new folks that, uh, haven't cast votes necessarily on projects that I've been involved with. Um, but it was twenty-five years ago I purchased my first piece of property out here. And, uh, Bob Stube, I think it was under the Heinemann administration, that we carpooled together to go down the state and figure out, how can we help the city improve the intersection that was left underdone, uh, by the state of Nebraska? And, uh, certainly it followed several administrations, uh, since then. One of the updates on this project in terms of what we did and why that was unique, this is a private project that's been annexed by the city of Omaha. And so for roughly the last six or seven years, I've been a mostly happy tax-paying citizen, where the dollars on this project does come to the city coffers. Um, but we've also been waiting for the right opportunity. Um, and as we went forward, what's, uh, neat was, we made a commitment to this corridor, to, we invested over forty million dollars to put in all the infrastructure out there with private money to, in, uh, incent the state to give us a yes vote and commit to the city to redo the intersection, so that the city wouldn't have to come up with a lot of money. And I don't know the end result, but I think, right now, the state through L-B nine-sixty, the Transportation Act, et cetera, I think the state's essentially picking up a hundred percent of those dollars for the improvement of that intersection, partly because they saw the commitment we made from a private, uh, team, private partnership, to make the improvements, and then continue to pay, uh, taxes for the city. As part of that, then, this final leg of this stage, we've been holding out, holding out, holding out. And this goes back to, uh, Steve Jensen. I don't know how long Steve's been gone. Dave, we almost wore you out, Mr. Fanslaw. Um, but the reality is this, we could've had that frontage filled up with car dealerships, like a lot of other people. That wasn't our vision, that wasn't our partnership's decision. And fortunately, I've had good partners that said, "Let's hold the plan, let's hold the line, let's keep the vision." And so, as a result of that, today, we were the first project approved under the Good Life District, under the leadership, um, you know, of Governor Pillen and his economic development team, to say, "We need to have projects that bring retailers to the Omaha area that are in other metros in this class, but for some reason Omaha's not been able to attract them." I just came back from Boise, Idaho this weekend. It's a community that's a little less than Omaha, but if you look at the types of retailers they have there and activity, Omaha needs to have that. And so, today, you're gonna be hearing, uh, really about that. And, um, so, we've been working, uh, our team led by Jeff Hofer, uh, Dakota, and DJ, as well as some other folks, has spent a couple years traveling across the U.S., interviewing developers that recognize the strength in Omaha and the demographics. We happen to be in an intersection, uh, or an area of the city where within fifteen minutes, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people, and the average household king, uh, income is over a hundred-and-forty-thousand. That's not only the best demographics in this state, it is amongst the best in the nation. That's here in Omaha, Nebraska. And the question is, why have we not been able to attract some of these higher-end, high-end use, uh, retailers to the market? Part of the reason is, is because it's so easy to just say, "Well, we gotta get something going, so let's put something in," instead of holding out for the right team and the right mix. You're gonna hear more, uh, today from Pogue Development. Greg Whitney's here, as well as JLL. They're the third-largest brokerage firm in the world. And, they partnered together, as well as they're two specialty brokers that relate specifically with high-end retail. In addition to that, we've secured and began work on, uh, real plans with Tori Gallis, architect, world-renowned architect firm out of Washington, D.C. And so, you know, I'm excited to be here today to talk about this project, but most importantly, we have an opportunity, meaning we, the city of Omaha, if we can act and respond to this, we can get something for the city of Omaha that, if we don't act, it's gonna go to some other jurisdiction outside of the city of Omaha, because of how the Good Life District works. So if we can work together, which we've been working together for over ten years, basically, this is the opportunity, and we hope this is the payback for the city and for our team of holding the line on a vision of realizing that we can do something really neat and really cool, uh, here in the state of Nebraska. So with that, I'm gonna, uh, bring up, uh, Greg Whitney with Pogue Development out of Memphis, Tennessee, and start working through some of the details. Look forward to hearing your comments, uh, as we discuss. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Kurt. Uh, my name is Greg Whitney, and I live at nineteen-thirty-four Curtis Avenue in Redondo Beach, California. So I've come a little ways here to this meeting today. Um, first of all, uh, uh, thank you for your remarks. We're very proud to be part of this team, to be part of the Jasper Stone team, and, and to be part of Avenue One. Um, Pogue Development Group is a national lifestyle retail developer. We develop mixed use. Uh, as Kurt said, we're, we're headquartered in Memphis, Tennessee. Uh, Pogue Development Group and our predecessor, Pogem McEwen, has had over thirty years of experience developing high-end lifestyle centers, uh, focused on great place-making, uh, and aspirational merchandising, uh, housing some of the nation's best retailers, unique restaurants, and entertainment concepts. Are we on to the next one?
We'll get this...
Okay, sorry. Um, we're credited for developing the very first lifestyle centers in the country, and are, uh, and originated the category. Uh, so this is in our blood. Um, let me introduce our team. I think we wanted to go back one, actually. I didn't know I was driving today, so I'm sorry. Um, uh, first of all, Josh Pogue, he's our CEO. Uh, he was, uh, scheduled to be here today, but, but could not make it. Uh, Josh has got, uh, thirty years worth of history. Uh, he's second-generation family, uh, president and CEO of the company. Uh, Josh's been involved over the company's thirty-year history in developing, development acquisitions and, and operations, uh, for the company's lifestyle centers across the country. Uh, he's been recently involved in, in acquiring three regional malls for redevelopment, uh, most recently in Memphis, Tennessee, Oak Court. Uh, the second guy up there is me. Um, I've got a thirty-five-year history in, in retail development, um, both nationally and internationally. Uh, we've done projects all over the world, China, Japan, Dubai. Um, some of the more recent projects that I've been involved in include SoFi Stadium in Los Angeles, so Stan Kronke's, uh, three-million-square-foot building there in Inglewood. Uh, we were part of that. We're part of a, uh, development, seven-and-a-half-million-square-foot mixed-use development in Cupertino, California, next to Apple's campus. And, uh, I was involved with the Chicago Bears, helping them master plan their three-hundred-and-twenty-six-acre, uh, purchase in Arlington Heights for a new stadium. See whether that all happens at the end of the day. Um, we've got Keith Laird. Keith is our Director of Leasing. He's involved in every project. He's got a rich, rich history, uh, with tenants, uh, nationwide. He was, uh, with Westfield for a number of years, working on their properties, uh, across the country, and Howard Hughes Corporation in Summerlin, Nevada, working on a nine-million-square-foot mixed-use development. The, uh, two women on the bottom of the page here are leasing agents. Um, uh, they're both part of Ten Twelve. Ten Twelve is a boutique brokerage component of JLL. Um, this group only handles the top five percent in the country, five percent of projects in the country. Um, both are fantastic in their roles. Molly on the left, uh, has been in projects, all, lifestyle projects all over the, uh, southeast, uh, and Midwest. Uh, she does work nationally. Holly Rome, sitting beside her, uh, is responsible for JLL's national, um, leasing practice, and again, uh, runs coast-to-coast with projects. She has exceptional tenant relationships. with projects. She has exceptional tenant relationships. You see Tori Gallis mentioned there. Tori Gallis, a world-class architect like Kurt had referenced. So we've got a first-class design team that stands behind this and there's a whole list of consultants below them. We'll quickly just go through a couple of projects. Obviously, SoFi Stadium that we referenced earlier. We owned that land before Stan Kronke came along. The 298-acre development ultimately ended up in 15 million square feet of master planning, about 8.6 million square feet of entitlement. That building is 3 million square feet, houses 68,000 fans in normal configuration. We added a 6,000-seat event venue as part of that development, half-million square feet of retail in a high-end luxury lifestyle configuration, about 750,000 feet of office, about 2,500 residential units on that site. Next to that is Avalon. And those two next projects, Avalon and the Battery at Taurus Park, those are examples of Molly's leasing capability with Holly Rome. These are projects that we are fond of, think are representative of what we ultimately will see near Avenue One or part of Avenue One. They are all mixed-use. They combine retail with residential units, hospitality uses, office uses, and other. Parks at Walter Reed is a great example of what Tori Gallis does. They've got a portfolio of projects that look like this and are all mixed-use in nature with public places as their core. Shops at Perry Crossing is a legacy project for Pogue and McEwen, Pogue Development Company, an example of what we've done across the country. And that last one is that Rise Project in Cupertino, that's 7.5 million square feet of project, 2 million square feet of office, about 2,650 residential units and a number, variety of different configurations, and about 200,000 feet, 250,000 feet of retail. We've been involved in that project for a number of years. And it finally got entitled about a month ago. I'm going to turn, well, just a final remark on Avenue One. We, we look at property across the country. When we were introduced to this project in Omaha about a year ago, it was a city that I had never been to before. It's a flyover city, which I, you know, you hear a lot, until you get on the ground here, you don't know how amazing this place is. And I'll say that, we are very, very fond of Omaha, Nebraska. We think that it is steady and stable. It's got a great economy. You have major growth here. You have all the attributes that we look for in developing a shopping center and a mixed-use project. In fact, you know, very early in our history, we, Pogue and McEwen was involved in developing one part place. So we do have lineage in the city. And I just say that, you know, demographically, Kurt said it, you know, this is one of the best demographics in the country. We think that it is very favorable to luring best-in-class tenancies, first-to-market tenancies. We're super excited about it. Our early reception on the project from tenants has been outstanding. I've been doing this for 35 years. The response that we've gotten here in your great city has been amazing. So we're really excited to be here and look forward to being a part of the process.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Other proponents?
Back to me again. Jim Bujer, 10250 Regency Circle. So, I'm going to spend a little bit of time just talking about the Good Life Act and why-
Well, and you know what? And Jim, what we want to probably do though is kind of, because all the council members got the long-
Briefing.
The long briefing, I don't, I don't know that we need to do the full kind of hour-long briefing that all the council members got. If you could maybe summarize it a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the Good Life Act. So, we were, as Kurt mentioned, we're the first Good Life District that was approved in the state of Nebraska. So, with the, all of the requirements that are associated with a metropolitan-class Good Life District, we're, we're really excited because there's really limited opportunities in a, in a city the size of Omaha because of the stringent requirements, which are listed here, billion-dollar, billion dollars in development costs, extraordinary requirements for the number of tenants and type of tenants you have to bring in and the number of people you have to draw to the development. So, it was a monumental achievement, quite frankly, to go through that process as quickly as they did. And as Kurt alluded to, they actually started the work on the reconstruction of 192nd Street and Dodge. So the NDOT hopes to finish that project before the end of the year. So there's a lot of great things that are coming together. And, you know, one, I guess, one of the things I want to make clear to everybody is, and there's a kind of a misunderstanding in the press and general public, the Good Life Transformational Act is not a turn-back tax. And so, which leads us back down here today, is, is we have to find a way to effectively capture the benefit which the Good Life District provides, which is the reduced state sales tax of, from 5.5% to 2.75%. So, effectively today, we have a total tax stack of 8.75% from the bar chart on the left, which is the 5.5% of the state's sales tax, the 1.5% city sales tax, and then we have an existing EEA occupation tax of 1.75%. On April 1st, we get the cut from 5.5% to 2.75%. And so you have the gap, which we're trying to fill with additional EEA requests, which is why we're here today. So, we're going to ask to, again, to fill that gap, that 2.75%, we're going to increase our EEA tax, our occupation tax, from 1.75% by the 4.5%. So, it's that gap, it's that 2.75% gap. So, in addition to that, we also have, because of the, the opportunity and the, the type of retailers that we're going to draw and the length of the, of the Good Life Act, we are also asking for an increase in our EEA now from 40 million to 150 million. And again, there's also an amendment to the redevelopment agreement, which our actual eligible cost capacity for the EEA is increased from 212 million to 255 million. And so, we've worked out with the Law Department, the amendment that's before the council today, and which we're asking to get approved. And so, so what does this mean for, for the city, for the project, for the city of Omaha in general? A lot of new jobs, a lot of local sales tax, hopefully with the type of retail develop, retail users that we're going to attract to the site and the retail opportunities that we're going to have because of this Enhanced Employment Act funds that we're going to capture within the development. We're going to have a lot more visitors. We're going to have lots of taxes from day one, the building materials tax. As Kurt alluded to, this land is presently annexed in the city of Omaha. We don't have TIF. All of the taxes that accrue from day one on the improvements in the district accrue to the benefit of the city of Omaha and the other taxing jurisdictions. So, it's different than a lot of projects we see when we're coming and asking for benefits. It's completely reliant on our client performing, bringing and developing the site, creating all of this value, not only for the developer, but for the city of Omaha. And those benefits all accrue day one. So, we think it's exciting for, for everyone. That's as fast as I can go, Amy.
No, thank you. No, I appreciate it.
So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. There is, I guess, Greg alluded to it, but we do have a lot of interest from retail tenants at this, this time. And, and we're anxious to move this process forward so that we can make commitments to them and, you know, hopefully get this thing kicked up, kicked off in style. So, with that, I'll let you continue with public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other proponents?
Thank you. Marco Floriani, Mayor's Office, just here as, to support the project and share the Mayor's Office's support for this project and the EEA Committee's recommendation to approve it. Feel like the EEA is the mechanism for this program, this Good Life District. And without it, can't maybe capture all the value there. So, with the EEA, feel like the recommendation was to put that in place and take it from the, the existing EEA agreed upon, 1.75% to the 4.5%. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other proponents? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none. Close the public hearing. Councilman Harting, you're recognized.
Good afternoon. Mr. Hofer, I don't think we've ever met, but I do know your reputation. And this is personally exciting for me because it knocks on the door of another property that's near and dear to my heart, to the west of this, the Metropolitan Community College Campus. And if I'm correct, this does butt up right next to that. By the time we see something like this, all the i's have been dotted, the t's have been crossed probably four or five times. But I'm sure you've already, you and your team have already examined public transportation options. Because I know your other neighbor across the street to the east has had some interest in getting metro area transit out to their campus, the Women's Hospital. And Metro has had the same problem. They're just, you know, such a vast difference, metro area transit never been able to buy into doing anything that would serve that corridor from 156th to 204th. So, I'm enthusiastic, I'm optimistic that this is going to help bridge that, to get mass transit, public transit out to 204th, to the metro area campus, the Women's Hospital, and your property, and Village Point, which would be a very positive thing for everybody in the city, especially where I, I think a lot of your potential employees are going to come from. So, thank you for this.
We can actually answer a question on that.
Feel free.
So, Jim Bujer, 10250 Regency Circle, we actually do have a metro stop. We did work with Metro when we were originally developing the project. And so, there is going to be public transportation. So, yep, that was an important part of, you know, the team that we worked with-
A heated terminal?
Several years. I don't know whether it's heated or not. So, but there will be a, there will be a stop there. So, and that's programmed into the plan.
All right. Anything further? Okay, I see no further lights. I want to thank you. Welcome, welcome to Omaha. Thank you for choosing us. I always said, in my, in my prior life before becoming a lawyer and then a councilwoman, I was in retail, worked at one specific place, opened a store in Oakview, traveled around and did retail store openings as part of what I did in my former career. So, I know the retail market, I know how tough retail is. But I have always thought too, having been in retail, knowing the people I know in Omaha, also being a little bit of a shopper myself, I have always thought Omaha could handle and would welcome and would support higher-end retail. I really believe that we would. Maybe they just didn't have the right home to go to until now. So, I'm extremely excited about this coming. It kind of borders mine and Councilman Harding's district. It's over in his, I'm a little jealous. But I think it's just a, I think it's just a fabulous project. And I love the fact that this is the first Good Life project. And, I mean, a billion-dollar project. You don't see that very often. I mean, number one, we don't see it in our state very often. You don't see it very often, even all over the country. So, I appreciate the fact that we have a local guy that we know really well and that we trust and has done the development. And then that he's found some other partners that he can, that he can partner with to actually make this happen. I just think it's a great combination of a good local developer that we know and trust, working with others that can make it even better. So, I love the partnership. And I want to thank you all for the presentation and what you're doing for Omaha. Any further lights?
Non-action items, items 71 through 88, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Do we have a motion adjourned? Row call.
Row. Bagley.
Hi.
Harding. Hug.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Motion passed 5 to 0. Meeting is adjourned at 4:22.